You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is November 14, 2023 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www excess laporte county.org.
Order, everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Joan, if you would, please do the voting.
Voting in progress.
Thank you. President Dunbury.
Present.
Michael Martines.
Present.
Ralph Fox.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Present.
Rich Young, he might be late. I did hear from him, I'm here. Attorney Damski.
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix. Evidently they absolutely don't hear anything. Police Chief Mark Swistick.
Present.
Park District President Gene Paxton.
Here.
BZA President Matt Bone, he's not here. And Building Commissioner Code Enforcement Deb Chubb.
Here.
Flood Plan Minister Ray Dunbries, absent. Plan Commission President Ralph Fox, even though he's here, he gets to answer twice. Website Samantha Arnold. Absent. Road Commissioner Bob Zokowski.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Joan. Before we get into the adopting the meeting agenda, I'm going to add something that I completely omitted. And that is, I wanted us all to remember and commemorate it. Okay, where did I put this now here? We lost a member, a former member of the town council. Alex Brofsov was both a member of the town council and the president of the town council at one time here in Michiana Shores, and he passed away towards the end of October. So it's something that I wanted to share with everybody. You know, Alex was a character. You'd see him sometimes sitting out on the corner at El Portal and Oakdale on the little bench out there and stuff. He walked around with his dog Gracie all the time. So we all know that. He was very passionate about the things he was interested in and actually worked on some things here in town that we're utilizing even now specifically with regards to the building codes, the inspections and things like that. So he was a member of the Plan Commission in the past as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals too. So I would like all of us to just bow our heads for a minute and remember Alex. Thank you all, okay?
I'd like to mention also.
Please.
He helped Rich Young and a few other men do the original stop 30, was it 39? No, 37.
Mm-hmm.
When they, no, that stopped 39, that was the one they tore down. The one they just.
Oh, 37, 37. Yes, 37.
He helped with that when that was built. That was all built here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Let us then move on now to adopting the meeting agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes, I have a new conference.
Okay. I will just say that I added to the agenda, one thing that I had for, I added several things from the original one out on Sunday, then I sent out midday, I sent a second one. And I just added now Section D under 8 AD, and that would be the tree cleanup estimates. Because we had started speaking about that in the past, and I thought we should go back and finish that up. Okay? Are there any other additions or corrections? You want something removed? Keep them in, everything good?
I'm willing to accept the.
Okay. Thank you. Ralph Fox moves to, okay, and Michael Martinez seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, four ayes. Okay, one is currently absent. All right. If that is done, let us move on to the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes that were sent out by Joan the other day? Okay, are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay, if not, then I will ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have five seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, four ayes. All right, thank you very much. Let us now move to the reports from Joan. Invoices and claims, everybody should have a copy of vouchers. Joan passed this out, you know, at the beginning before the meeting started, so.
Do you want to go over the minutes who approved them? I.
I'm sorry?
Who, who made the motion?
Oh, for the minutes? Okay, Michael Martinez moved to approve. Ralph Fox seconded.
Okay, and five ayes.
Well, four ayes because Rich is not here.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll have to get a copy. I sent everybody a copy, but I didn't keep any for myself.
Oh, okay.
So get a copy so that you can sign it.
Okay, you need to use my copy then? I printed a copy off of the minutes?
I need two copies.
Oh.
For the record, I need two copies.
All right, I only have one with me, okay.
I prefer you keep yours in case somebody needs it and they don't have it.
All right. Okay.
Okay. We approved that meeting minutes, and I've got some others here that I did a review and found out that we did not have the ones from the budget meetings. We don't have them signed. So I can pass this around and you can read it if you want to read it aloud, you can do that, but then I'll need those signed. And then I have the ones from the budget approval meeting we didn't.
Okay, had you, did you ever send this out to us electronically? I don't remember seeing these.
You probably didn't because, like I said, I went through the, did a review and I found the.
Oh, that they were not, okay, very good, okay.
So there's another second, if you want to read them.
There's one.
That's the one.
The same one, okay.
Yeah, this one's different. One is the budget approval.
Actually, I did not ask, said that we have more than four, that may be saying the postal, you know, the additional four numbers for the postal code, I think you mentioned, how many there were? The zip four, yeah. You did, because I didn't know how many there were.
What about?
No, it just says here that President Dunbar stated we had more than four.
There's undoubtedly more than four in Michiana Shores.
Okay. I don't remember stating it, but okay.
Somebody was supposed to check that.
Yeah.
What's up?
Somebody was supposed to check that with the post office and it wasn't me.
You can't find information easily.
Mm-hmm.
I do know that there's a plus four.
Here's an extra copy of that. Okay, oh, that's what the number was right, okay. As the other set.
Those are here, sir.
Okay, it's the second.
Are you going to approve?
Okay, they're checking them, yeah, because the two of us read them.
Okay.
Okay. All right, for which one? Because this was two meetings, one is July 18th, one is October 17th.
Right here, sir. This one's absent.
Okay. Okay, oh, well, we only have, all right, Joan, we're going to have a problem with approving these because we have, well, we could approve one, I think. Right, July 18 minutes, July 18, 2023, town council proposed 2024 budget meeting minutes. This is where we discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so present at that meeting were Ralph Fox, Sam Paxton, Joan Lewis and myself. Michael had abstained, he was not there, neither was Rich Young, so.
Oh, did I have them listed?
Pardon?
I didn't have them listed as absent.
You do.
You do, you have them listed as absent. I'm just saying who can, you know, who's going to be able to vote on this, I'm just.
I'll make a motion to approve those budget minutes.
Okay, so budget minutes for July 18.
Yes.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Sam Paxton seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So that's three and two would be an abstention, or one abstained and one not here. Okay. Second set of minutes is the council meeting, the budget approval, which took place October 17, 2023. Present at this meeting were Dinah Dunbrus, Ralph Fox, Rich Young and Joan Lewis. So right now, we only have two of the town council members, so we have to put this off until either Rich gets here today or until the next meeting.
Okay, well, give me that one back and the other two.
Here's this one, okay, that one, and here's this one. Yes, 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 I'm giving it back.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll sign these and give them back to you momentarily. Okay, Joan, here they are. Okay.
Okay, I don't know where to start.
The, well, wherever the vouchers, you gave us one set.
Vouchers, I think you got most of them, I sent to you.
We have.
I didn't get any.
Yeah.
This one, yeah, we didn't get anything via email.
Some earlier in the month.
Earlier in the month?
Yeah.
I would have saw them.
Yes, I actually searched.
Okay. Well, I have the payroll taxes that I don't send out, and you can go through the.
Okay.
Have them for October and October, so since you.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm not right, no, it's on.
Is it the same one?
Payroll taxes, no.
Okay, so. Okay, two comments, there's something, I'll send them along. Okay, these are the checks.
Those are the. Yes.
Should we be signing these?
We won't since we.
So has your vote on it?
Supposed to sign this?
Not yet, we haven't voted yet to approve them, so, you know, once you've looked at them, if there are no questions, you can make a motion.
You good, Sam?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers for September 30th payroll.
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves to approve, Michael Martinez seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes. Okay, and those vouchers have been approved.
And I'll make a motion to approve the payroll taxes for Deb Chubb for October 31st.
Okay. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Fox moved, Michael Martinez seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. For ayes, those vouchers have been approved. Thank you.
Okay, while you sign that, I will go ahead and read the.
Please.
Accounts payable register for November 14. Town of Long Beach, $5,174 for police protection, Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department. Rental for November, $105. Office Depot, there's several which I've passed, you all have a copy of. Exactly, we have two copies now. Office Depot for the calculator and it's just a little handheld calculator. Miniscellaneous Office Supplies, $56.66. Had a cable to connect Brenda's new computer, I mean, new printer, $19.99. Republic Services, $4,659.72 for refuse pickup. Department of Water Works Water for Kincaid, $9.76. Baker Chili for professional service and conduct conjunction with the 2024 budget, CNA Surity for the new bonds for Brenda, $100. Surity Bonds for Joan Lewis, $235. Comcast, $169. AT&amp;T Mobility, $80.79. AT&amp;T, $80.39. Home Chase Card Services for Microsoft for both of our computers, $25. And also Adobe, $21.39. Jim McKay has several bills here. He did password reset, did work on Microsoft Outlook, he reviewed the emails for November 2023, $98.75. He also worked on AT&amp;T tech support for previous email issues, $138.25. And he worked on bogus emails, antivirus detection software, which was $118.50. Brenda Heckman traveled to the bank and post office, $33.75. Chase Card Services, we had sent out several police tickets. This one was for $8.56. Access Support County for videotaping, $500, that's for this next quarter. And Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $3,683.16. Reeve Riley for the CCG grants, $3,400, yeah, I wish, $348,935.8. That was for the first billing, which was 90%. They have to do what they call a 10% retention. So we also received the one for the 10% retention, that one was $37,881.67. And Department of Water Works Water for the garage, $9.76. For the total, $405,912.40. And there's still the issue that we have to return forty-some thousand back to the grant because we did not use the whole contract.
Yes.
As you all know, our contract was less.
The approved.
Quite a bit less, yeah.
Okay.
But they give us the money upfront and now we will have to pay some of it back.
Okay.
And we also, I thought we wanted to have the additional appropriations for this for tonight, I've received nothing. I don't know what happened. We're definitely have to have it for the next month.
Okay, all right, Joan. Any questions?
Can you explain that a little bit? It's the addition of $48,000.
We were approved, the original bit from Reeve Riley was greater than what was actually spent, okay? They thought that they would need more materials, and because we did not need as much material, as much of the materials, we have to get that back because to item, not item, but.
LTP.
Yeah, LTP for the, because we.
They gave us more.
Yeah, they gave us more money than that was actually used, okay? So now we have to return that part to them, yeah.
They're the only grant that I've dealt with that pays you upfront.
Okay.
Plus, we do have to transfer funds and put funds back into this account. I shouldn't say back in it, put it into it from the appropriations, what was appropriated, and from it, we still have some forty-some thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right. I still have, you know, a question, I mean, that we have, we have two different internet service providers that we're paying for, so that to me is always a question. I think we have to really look at, why do we have to have two separate internet service providers? I understand secure email addresses, but an internet service providers, I don't know why we need two in the same office, why we are such a tiny office. So I think that we should somehow, you know, figure this out. Not that much, but over a year, it adds up to, you know, probably close to $1,000 on that. So I just wanted everybody to know that that might be a concerning issue. Okay, any, if there's no other questions?
How do you contact this Jim McKay, Joan? Does he reach out, like, or do you just, he's?
Does he what?
Do you, does he reach out to you and check in with you, or like?
I call him whenever there's an issue.
And how do we get hooked up with him?
Long time.
He's on the same guy for the last.
Yeah, he's familiar with the system, and I'm already set up on a system that either he could add you as council members, anybody that's with the town that's using email, or we can go with IoT and do it with the IN.gov. An issue if we go with IN.gov, they take care of cybersecurity in case we have a.
That's, yeah, because, okay.
Yeah.
So that 11850 could potentially be going, going away if we, when we make a decision of the IoT.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, then I need a motion to approve those vouchers as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers to November 14.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Fox moved to approve the vouchers, Michael Martinez seconded, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Absent, okay, thank you very much. Was that it, Joan, on that part?
No, I have an issue with a bill from Maple City Venture or Tree that.
Yeah, we have that under new, it's under New Business B, okay? So I do have it on the agenda.
I had to deal with clerk treasure, sorry.
Okay, let me put that in under there, because, you know, somebody has to approve. Okay, thank you. All right. Departmental reports, Chief Swistick, please.
Good evening, everyone. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 235 calls for service in the month of October, when compared to 157 in previous year for an increase of 78 calls. During the month of October 28, incident reported documented, a total of 15 individuals that were arrested. Specific to the town of Michiana Shores, on October 8, Deputy Mitchell Sykes was dispatched to Angled Drive, reference a female who was actively cutting to the wrist to commit suicide. Upon arrival, he was assisted by Officer Andrew Paul of the Michigan City Police Department. During their investigation, they discovered that the 31-year-old female had earlier cut her arms to harm herself. The female was transported to the hospital and emergency detention was completed to seek medical assistance for suicidal thoughts. Thankfully, a friend who was receiving text messages earlier that evening from the female actually contacted 911 and assisted us in getting there in time to render aid. On October 10, I personally responded to the 200 block of Pocahontas Drive, reference a sick raccoon. Upon arrival, I found a very sick raccoon walking between the homes and had dispatched the raccoon at that location. I will note, Long Beach, here in your town, LaPorte County Sheriff's Department and Michigan City have all shared that they've been experiencing several raccoons this year that have rabies and that that we've had to dispatch. So I would encourage anyone who comes across a sick raccoon, please do not approach it, please contact us and we'll do the necessary thing we have to, to deal with it. On October 13, Deputy Mitchell Sykes conducted a traffic stop on El Portal Drive near Murchwood Trail that led to the arrest of the driver for operating while intoxicated. This 65-year-old male driver from the town of Michiana Shores was transported to LaPorte County Jail for processing. On October 14, Deputy Brandon Hughley and Deputy Max Farthing responded to the concentrating drive, serving an outstanding arrest warrant. There, they arrested the 47-year-old male for probation violation and possession of a hypodermic syringe. Aside from that, there's nothing else important for the month.
Okay, thank you. Chief, I just had a question, was it rabies or distemper?
Uh, it was distemper.
Yeah, okay.
It was forming at the mouth pretty good and dazed and confused and just walking around in the yard.
Yes, yeah.
We've had, like I said, several, I think six that we've dispatched in Long Beach in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, and Bob helped get rid of one for sure that I know of on Ponchartrain.
I have a question about the traffic radar, the speed radar, yes, the speed radar. Is that Long Beach, Michiana Shores property or is that?
Long Beach City, Long Beach property.
Okay. Is that, because I like the fact that it's, of course, it's going out of the town, which is important still, because that's bad air. Is there any other thoughts of completing that to different locations?
Definitely, if you have a location, please send it to me. We're always looking for suggestions that you guys feel like you need it. I try to bring it over three, four times a year for you. If you have a location, that's great, I know it's injured the walls, you're pretty good for an account, you won't.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Fire report, please.
156.51 hours.
Excuse me, Bob, can you, I'd stand up or stand to make sure that it stays clear, okay? Thank you. Okay.
156.51 hour, the worker filled in for the month. On the 4th, the general meeting, 11th, the business meeting, 18th, the general meeting, and the 25th, the general meeting. Calls for service for the month, on the 3rd of October, on line for fire alarm, on the 4th, extra drive for fire alarm, on the 6th, extra drive for fire alarm, on the 11th, Brookside Trail for fire alarm. On the 14th, they had a night to call at Hillside. On the 17th, they had a gas leak on the ride over trail. 20th, ordinary trail for fire alarm. The 20th is also on the night that trail with the wire down. 28th, park side in Howard Avenue with the wires down. So two fire calls, Michiana Shores, Michiana Shores, two fires in the number three, it got there. Three fires and zero, it was mutually lit, it got there. Pancake breakfast was a great success, and so all of that for the 11th in May.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bob. Any questions? All good? Okay, thank you very much.
I have something to add.
I'm sorry, Joan?
I have something to add.
Okay.
The pancake breakfast, we had, some of the town folks donated some of the baked goods for the bake sale. I want to thank everybody that did that.
Okay, thank you very much, Joan, for bringing that up. Okay, thank you very much, Joan, for bringing that up. Let us go on to the next building measures report.
So I can now be reporting this morning and it takes out copies. Um, you know, regular numbers of permits, regular stuff, nothing exciting. We do have good news about the three-six-zero-two lecture drive. We did have a evidentiary hearing and the judge has ruled in our favor and so are requiring the homeowner to remove the stairs and deck within sixty days from the day of the order. And then, and then after that, we'll have a hearing to decide on fines and costs.
Okay, awesome.
Um, I've not heard anything from Poncho Train, this is all on our, of the law, staff orders. But a firm did report that they came to town hall and were talking about renting long-term at home. But I know they're still looking for them. And then, still, still working with this woman who put up a fence without a permit. She paid a fine, but, you know, she still, she still wants to get permit and go to BCA and get a variance if she wants to keep it because it's not too much.
Okay.
So, yeah, and, um, so, you know, Tony is working with the, the homeowners at four-oh-two-L Park, thirty-seven, uh, hundred, okay, did, um, just in the last couple of days, produced a, a permit application and a signed contract for J.B. to do the roof. So there's some actual movement.
Okay.
Nobody's yet meeting during that last one.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Deb? No, okay, thank you, I'll say. And Deb did have at the bottom, if you noticed, that the next BCA meeting is January twenty-fifth. Good, so let us move on. Park Board, Jean Paxton, please.
The Park Board met October twenty-third. We have, uh, the Park Board approved work was done by Met Wolf and both parks. This work consisted of pulling up the old railroad ties, ties in Kinkadee and filling low spots and holes and reseating. Both parks had several low areas and holes and these were all built and reseated. Material and labor were contracted at twenty-seven hundred hours and this work is complete. The Park Board also approved a proposal by Met Wolf for resurfacing the Old Nature Trail with limestone chip. The work would be grading the path from moving debris and/or growth to priming the path and laying gravel. The cost of this project is, according to this, fifty-two hundred hours. It was approved by the board contention and the approval of the clerk treasurer that the funds were available. This work has not been done. The Park Board also discussed, um, longer-term projects, one of which is the redesign of the tennis court area in Kinkadee. Also discussed was creating a fire plan for the parks. We also talked about maintenance on the trees in Leeds Park, which, um, tree tracking and maintenance on the trees hasn't been done in quite, quite a while. Um, a quote has been obtained by Major City and this will be discussed at the next Park Booster Meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of Jean today? No, all right, great, thank you very much, Jean. Road Commissioner, Bob Solkowski.
The month of October, November, a total of twenty-three hours, most of that, they were removing trees from the road.
Just a minute, Bob. Okay, thank you, because there was some noise in the background. Okay, go ahead, please. Sorry, interrupted, but put here.
Mostly, we got the trees in the road, buried human animals, wasn't here. And, uh, got the big truck starting to get ready for the winter season and I believe I sent everybody an email. I got a copy of the email and pictures for Rich.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much. You have. Pardon?
So we're almost ready.
Almost ready, okay. Any questions to Bob?
In the, in the scheme of things, how, how likely is the car to make it through one more winter?
I think we are at it this year, but like I said, the email, I did get a quote for replacement, it's a year out, so. And that would be a new, new vehicle. I've looked at quite a few used ones, we can talk about that, we formed this committee and see what we want to do.
Okay, all right. No other questions, then, thank you very much. Plan Commission?
Uh, no report, we did not have a meeting in the summer, we didn't have a call, everybody.
Okay. Listen, all right, okay. Matt did not submit any kind of a BCA sort of, you know, report on that. Deb, did you want to say anything about the BCA? The last BCA meeting?
The meeting's been meeting in a couple of months, the next one's scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, White Ditch Drainage Board, I went to the Drainage Board this morning and just reported that we needed to take a good look at the ditch between El Portal and the Michigan State Line. So, uh, the, um, the administrator or secretary there, Christine Kyle, has someone that she's going to be sending out to take a look, you know, for the town. So that was it for us at the Drainage Board, okay? Uh, Samantha's not here, I don't think she has anything new to report except that she did send out the news about the leaf pickup and she's included the, yeah, just the leaf pickup for us, okay. NERC C, the NERC C's next meeting is going to take place in December. I did attend an environmental meeting, only I did it remotely, I wasn't there. So that always provides information on what's taking place with regards to environment, things that might be available for us to use. Thursday, I hope to make it to a ped, what is it, walking, paddling and peddling meeting, meaning, you know, walking bikes and, and, you know, river cruising. You know, meeting that they're going to hold at one-thirty, it's open to anybody who'd like to go, you know, you know, in our urban Indiana area, so. Okay, we will move on to unfinished business, okay? And the first thing that I have listed there is the refuse shortfall determination and bidding. So now's the time to ask any kind of questions and, you know, begin to figure this out. We can actually, as long as we do some discussion now, we can actually get together and, and sort of wrap this up, as long as we provide enough information for our residents to hear about it and be able to listen to it when we do our next meeting, you know, before we vote.
Okay. I can take a few, few moments to summarize what I've come to understand here.
Okay.
And it all started as a result of the budget meeting that we had with Susan Cowan and, uh, this past summer, where she had provided a year-to-date look, a prior-year look and projected for twenty-twenty-four look at our budget. And by categories, we all saw the same thing that we, that we were, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, we had a shortfall in the amount of fees that we were collecting to pay our refuse contract. In twenty-twenty-three, we were halfway through and we were projected to have like a double bad amount, I think the twenty-twenty-two figure was somewhere in the range of ten to twelve thousand dollars. And she had projected a shortfall of twenty thousand for this year and for next year it was even worse, twenty-five thousand. Now, I don't, I'm still not clear on the math because from what Joan has provided, as far as our contract prices and what we're actually billing, uh, it's less than twenty-five thousand or twenty thousand for this year, twenty-five thousand for next year shortfall. But it's still a shortfall and it needs to be addressed. And, um, the town has responsibility to not, you know, not, you know, collect enough of our expenses, that's sort of not a very good model to follow. So from what I understand, projecting from next year, for twenty-twenty-four, uh, the contract price for, um, began in March, uh, I believe, of every year, green, it renews and goes, kicks into a different pressure. So for twenty-twenty-four, we're going to have two months remaining of the, uh, the whole contract price. And that, uh, that contract total for, for the first year is fifty-five thousand nine sixteen sixty-four. The second year of the contract increased to fifty-eight thousand seven fourteen fifty-six. So if you take two months of the current year, or the first year contract, forty-six fifty nine seventy-two a month, and you take ten months of the second year contract, and that's forty-eight ninety-two eighty-three per month, you come to a grand total of fifty-eight thousand two forty-seven seventy-four is what we should, or should be collecting now. The leaf pickup is a little fairer because it's an annual, uh, bill, forty-two thousand six sixty-four. So we currently collect for refuse garbage, a hundred and forty dollars annually. And for the leaf pickup, we collect a hundred and thirty for a total of two hundred and seventy. We should be collecting under the new, according to my math, what I understand to be correct, we should be collecting for the coming year for refuse, one sixty-seven eighty-six. And for leaf, we're actually collecting a little bit more, so math works out to be one twenty-two ninety-five, so a difference of seven dollars and five cents in our favor. On the refuse, we're at a negative twenty-seven eighty-six. Additionally, Joan has added that we should add an administrative fee for cover our postage fees and time preparing the invoices, sending the invoices out, and then managing also the back end of that collections. And that, to me, is the only unknown in this. I've asked Joan for a couple of times to find out what quantity of accounts or residents that are passed through our in arrears of payments, because in my opinion, the only difference between what Susan is calling us as a shortfall can come from, these are unpaid debts that we're not collecting in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Now.
We have very few, very few, it's not going to mount to fifteen thousand. We have one large one that we're working on right now and it's been turned over to the attorney.
So if this is all correct, if these figures are all correct, and there's three hundred and forty-seven households in Michiana Shores, that's correct?
I just ran a, a report this afternoon and without actually reviewing it to see if there are some people that might be missed, um, that's, what we have is three forty-three.
Three forty-three. Did you also have the businesses?
But that.
In your, in your, one of your emails, you said that, I think you came up with the figure of one sixty-two or something, uh, that we should be collecting for refuse. And that, I did the math backwards and it does work out to be three hundred and forty-seven households that you, that you used, so.
Because we have houses that were built, because the three forty-three is a number from years.
I mean, it's.
It's been added on to.
It makes a huge difference because, and though we do, we need to come up with the figure north of one sixty-seven. The other concern that I have is that we know that we need to create a net ordinance, Brad has indicated that. Do we have a copy of the last ordinance that was created by the council for creating the current fee?
I'd have to check.
But in theory, there is one since it's a requirement, right?
There should be, yes, there should be.
I vaguely remember.
That doesn't mean anything because there's been several, even with this conference.
You know, Ben, yeah, no, for the leaves. I know there was one for the leaves.
Wait, just, I hear, uh, Ben speaking, I'm sorry, but.
I was just asking if you knew when I was putting place, and Joan said she doesn't either.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think it was, what were you, second year of the leaf, so it would have been last year that we had to do it. So I have a copy, I think I could find electronically to give to you.
Okay, send me one.
I'll send it to everybody.
Twenty-two, for sure.
Thank you.
Twenty-two.
Yes.
Somebody was trying to get on.
Oh, Bob?
The other, um, the other concern that I have is that, um, from a timing perspective, so if we, Joan's calendar has been to send it out in early December, then, if we're going to push this to the next council meeting, we're going to miss that, okay? So we need to, either need to do one of two things, we need to hold a special session, we need to just resolve, pass an ordinance, notify the community that this is going to happen and do all that, before we get Joan to agree to wait until this is all finalized. And if it's delayed sending out the invoices by a couple of weeks or a month, that's what we need to do.
The bad problem with it, you're running right into my year ends, there's an awful lot has to be done at the year end.
Well, Joan, if you were going to be sending this out the first week of December, our meeting is taking place the twelfth, that would bring a few extra days.
After you have a meeting, then I have to go back and do all the things that I have to do.
Were we having an executive?
We are going to be having an executive session, but to see, an ordinance like this has to be done at a regular public meeting, executive session is closed. So we could have an extra meeting immediately after our executive session, at which we could bring this up, I believe.
But you still have to get proper notice.
Oh, of course, yeah. And then that part would be open to, you know, to anybody to come in and listen.
Yeah, but I have to post, then have.
Yeah, but we, we only need forty-eight hours to make, for a post. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay? We have.
Executive session.
Yeah.
Executive session next week.
It says Monday, and which days are yours?
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday, that's when Brad can make it. Can you guys make it Monday or Tuesday? Pick a day then.
To what?
Yeah, Tuesday would have to be seven PM start time, Monday would be five PM start.
Okay, okay. Brad, when can Brad come around?
No, Joan brings up a good point, because when you're adopting an ordinance, you publish notes for cases before the meeting that you're going to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Then when it's adopted, you publish notes. So there's remonstrance or objection period after setting the fee.
Okay.
So putting it out thirty days, even if you have a meeting tonight, you're not going to have the building.
Right, okay.
So.
Any suggestion, then?
Joan, how, when is your, what is your calendar for the year end? Does it run up until the very end of December?
Very end of the summer.
December, December, all the things you have to do.
It, we have to close it out and there's a lot of work that's done in January after it's closed out. And so that all has to be done. We don't have our last meeting until the twenty-eighth here. I believe it's the twenty.
My question would be, I don't see a reason why we couldn't push, push this out into January to send the bills out. We would note, we can notify residents. It's, we're not going to lose another ten to fifteen thousand dollars, Joan.
You're not going to lose that, you are going to lose that.
We're not going to do it. We have to get this done and we have to, uh, correct what hasn't been done in the past.
You're not going to lose ten thousand dollars in one billing. How much are you losing in one billing?
Joan is going to make a difference.
At least two years.
It does make a difference.
I can go back on twenty-twenty-one and twenty to find out how much the town has lost because we haven't been doing what we should have been doing.
Yeah, if you just do the twenty-seven dollar shortfall in three hundred and forty-seven houses, that's almost ten thousand dollars, ninety-four hundred dollars.
For a year, for just one billing?
For one billing, it's about six thousand dollars, I think.
We may have backwarded on the second half of it, but I don't like.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you'd rather do that.
Since you knew this since last summer, when Susan was up here, why are we waiting till we're a very last minute? And then you're pushing me to do all these changes when I'm going to be real busy. I'm not saying it doesn't have to be done, but it just amazes me that everything we do, we have to wait till we got this much time.
Joan, Joan, let's not start spreading who is, who said, who did and whose fault it is. We're not children.
I'm not.
Okay, we, we're not.
I'm just wondering why we are.
Joan, we're not children. I think if anything, it is a collectively, okay, missed opportunity to take care of it earlier, okay, by this entire group that's here. So we're not going to start throwing this, that or the other. If we need to change something, it's, I. If we need to change something, it's either that, or we have to add a third billing for a, for the makeup amount to the residents. To, I mean, we're going to have to do something. So is there another alternative? Do we send out the regular bill, and then send out a second, another billing? Yes, a reconciliation bill.
So are there two payments that were made on this, or is it?
Two payments.
Both one billing?
Two payments on one bill, and it's sent out in December, and it's sent out in June.
It is sent out again in June.
There's twice. Yeah, in other words, we sent out two, but Joan meant that a refuse bill and the, and the leaf bill go out at the same time, on one bill.
But it's sent out just?
Twice a year, yes.
So theoretically, the December bill could go out, then the June bill could be adjusted as a reconciliation bill. The risk you're having with that is instead of a $27 increase, people are seeing a $50 increase, $54 increase.
Jen, all right.
Is there some way of doing it, and still getting the bills out in December? Because the computer's got to be changed, too, because that's all computerized.
Make the ordinance retroactive?
No.
Is it possible?
Is there such a thing that the shortfall could be picked up with the AARP funds or ARP funds?
No, no, we're not going to start doing that. This is money that we have to collect from our residents.
Right, you've already done that, except in two years, right, or you're probably picking it up somewhere else. So this is fixing the problem moving forward. If you're not going back and collecting what you lost in '22, '23.
Why don't we go back to '22 and '23? I don't know how you're going to pick up any of that.
No, but we have to go forward the right way. So now, is there an alternative, that if we send out this regular bill, and then we send out, you know, and if we need to do, you know, extra help, then, you know, we, we provide the extra help, hopefully, you know, Brenda can help out maybe on that kind of thing, to send out the extra billing, and even do a third billing for that shortfall.
Yeah. So the way I see it, yeah, your one option is to push the December billing to January so you can time to make the adjustment, then it's done for the year. That doesn't work necessarily for the clerk's office, because it sets off the timing, and it could upset people's billing, bill paying. Second option is you do your standard bill timely, or so the clerk can get that out Maybe put a notice with that bill that this rate is subject to change, and that could even be your notice that you're having a public meeting on the issue in January or February, if you choose to have the meeting. Adopt the new ordinance, the ordinance is in effect for the rate change. That will be reflected on the year end.
Okay, so that there's no way of retroactively, you know, giving a fee that should have been added to this bill?
You are doing that with the ordinance.
Oh, okay, all right.
You're collecting a fee for the entire year.
All right, okay.
I mean, calling it retroactive to the December bill, basically, you're just catching up, you're making a reconciliation bill, aren't you?
Yeah, I wouldn't have a third bill. If you want to catch up with the second billing of the year, I wouldn't be okay with that. It's going to be quite a bit higher.
Right, it's not, you know, and I would suggest if you go that route, you put some notice with the December bill.
That's a great idea.
It's very appropriate.
Okay, all right. Michael, anything else you're okay on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that, that sounds like a good solution, then, that we send out the regular bill, add a notice to them, giving you an idea of exactly how much we are going to have to raise this, announce that we are going to be having a meeting publicly, you know, so that everybody knows that it's taking place.
And that gives time, too, to make sure the calculation's correct, because, I mean, you, I saw your emails, the numbers are good, but we don't know that, your math is good, we don't know the numbers come in to it or didn't.
No, that's just for the actual cost. That doesn't include any administration.
Right, so we need, we need to understand.
Do you need any administration?
We need to understand what your factor is for your administration. So do you have an idea about what that is?
Not offhand.
Did you come up with $7.05 for the refuse? Did you round up from 122.95 to 130 by design, or was that by just?
I don't know, and I'd have to go back through the records and see what's in there.
All right, so we'll just need to.
Because sometimes what is.
From you.
If it's in there, because what has happened in the past, just like some of the things that's been happened here, that you change things, and if I don't have it done in a resolution or an ordinance, it's very difficult to go back and find that stuff, right?
We need to know so we can put it in the ordinance, what administrative fee. And Brad, would we need to disclose it as separate administrative fee?
Okay. All right, let us, all right, if there are no more other questions about it, then I don't know if we really, do we need to do a vote on this, then, that this is how we're going to run it this time around, or this?
No.
Because this is more or less an office kind of an issue, right? Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. All right. Let us move on to, okay, the next thing that had been included here was using the IOT for Town email accounts. I know that we were going to be looking at this to get more information. Joan, is there a, I know that you listened to that particular webinar, participated in that. Is there a recording of that that can be?
They make no recordings of it, and that's for security purposes. There's no recordings of any of their meetings, we cannot get of it. If you want, we can have a representative come up.
From IOT?
Buying it for IOT, or?
I thought that's what the meeting was going to be, Dinah, Joan, Sam, and Samantha.
I have two sent, or all of those information.
Okay, you have it, then.
Multiple people offering to get on.
I saw that on those emails.
My, I did, did that part, and then I see Samantha is joined on the call. So Samantha, for your information, Joan, created the town website today and administers the town website. So I do believe she has the proper credentials to be involved in this. So that's why I suggested that we bring Samantha in, because she's clearly way ahead of my technical expertise.
Oh, yeah.
So that's where Samantha would be, be the point person, if she's still willing to do so, kind of run interference on what it is that we can get through the state, and are there benefits, are there drawbacks, and so that we can make a determination.
I'd like to be on those meetings.
Of course.
Think you were included anyways.
Yeah. You were included on all those lists anyway. So, okay, I think that's a good suggestion. So then, you know, we keep moving forward, and can you then keep in touch with Samantha then about this?
Sure.
Sam? Okay, thank you very much. All right, good. So now, the CCG invoices and returns, we already actually covered that, where Joan started talking about, we expanded more on the monies that had to be paid out, and what now will have to be returned to the state. So we already know that, so I guess C is covered. Four is the tree cleanup estimates that were done. I believe we got one estimate from Maple City, Bob Wright, excuse me, we got, Bob, you got?
Yes.
Okay, so we got one estimate. Now, Sam, you had that whole list made up, and including a form that could be done to request this proposal, kind of from anybody else, correct?
Correct.
But has anything else been done yet on that?
No.
No, okay.
The, there's been a question raised by Michael about one of the trees being on non-town-owned properties. So I think what we need to do is, first of all, to address getting other bids. In my work, in life, when you've got a request for proposal, it went out from your client, they sent it to you to complete, and it took you a certain amount of time to complete it, and you either submitted or you don't. So I think the town, and it's, if we're going to pursue trying to get multiple bids for this kind of work, we have to make a determination of what level above a certain dollar threshold or complexity that we want to get involved with doing a formal request for proposal. It's not something that we have to do, I don't think that we have to do for every instance, but I do think it's beneficial to the town to get multiple bids. You can't rely on one vendor to get comfortable with us, and they, you know, not competition's good, right? So I think I'm prepared to send this out to multiple vendors to get responses. I requested Mick Wolf, I asked Mick Wolf to be a text if he was interested in it, and I did not get a response, but I learned it's not open for public just yet, so. I do, I do want to set up a formal process. We may even, at some point, you know, select vendors that we want to get bids from based on their reputation, and based on their qualifications, and whether or not they are registered, or they're in proper insurance and so forth. So those are the kind of things that we need to talk about. I'd be happy to send this to the tree man, to Mick Wolf, whoever, but I think the town needs to first get to, are these really all properties that we have a vested interest on? Are these trees all on our town properties? Is that a measurement that we need to be concerned with? If it's in the easement, and it's got a potential to fall into the road, is that a the term criteria that we're looking for, that would qualify it to be taken down at the town's expense? If it's on a, on a private property, I'm pretty much sure that that's not something that we're going to be involved with. But the question is, on the easements on any property, is that something that the town is willing to get involved with? Town-owned properties, fairly clear, right? If they're going to fall and they're dead, they need to be removed.
Yeah, when, in doing research, you know, on all of this, I think I've mentioned this before, and maybe this applies more to farmlands than it does to actual, you know, residential properties within a town like ours. But the owner of the property is essentially responsible for taking care of all the growth, anything that is growing, on the property up to the edge of the pavement. So a homeowner should be responsible for taking care of all of those things. If that thing should fall down into the street, though, it is our responsibility to move it off of that street, to get that out of the street. But up until that time, and my suggestion would be that the homeowners have to be responsible for maintaining all the growth that they have, their shrubs, their trees, any kind of bushes that they have. Joan sent us all a letter that had, a sample of a letter that had been sent out in 2008 to various residents in the town, and that referred to the growth at, especially at corners. Well, in driving around in the town, looking at those trees, because I went with Bob, I went out by myself, I drove, for instance, I checked today, I was looking at how many leaves are out there, what was collected, and I make notes as I go around. And we do have places where people have growth that is not only up to the edge of the pavement, but it is on the street, and that includes bushes. So, I mean, those are also things that are in the way. Granted, they don't fall down and, you know, I mean, cause that much, cause as much problems to treat us. But our residents should be aware that they have to take care of the things that are on their property. The right-of-way does not belong to the town, it doesn't belong to the utilities. The town and the utilities have a right to go on that property to do something. The residents or the homeowners, the property owners are responsible for the things that are on it, which is, I think, what we should take as a, you know, as, you know, principle of ours. I don't know what Brad might be able to say on that, but.
Yeah, I would just say, the right-of-way gives you the right to go, and it doesn't give you the obligation.
Yeah, so, so that we need to take a look at those, those trees, and I know when we were driving around, that I was trying to make notes, and saying that this was checking against town property. When I got back home, I checked, you know, by addresses and locations as best I could. I could have missed something, that, you know, turns out that it was on a, you know, a private land, and it was, you know, a tree. So anyway, but, you know, we can go over that all over again, I know that they're all marked, because I once have seen that before, and I saw the list that had been made out. So we could take another look and just figure out, is this, you know, a private property, or is this something that belongs, you know, to, is it, is it a town property? And the first ones we need to go after, of course, are the ones that are on town property, you know, to make sure that we.
Does the town have a list or a map of town-owned properties?
The only way we could check against that is using Beacon. We don't have a particular, I don't think we have any particular list on that. We made a couple of nice maps for the comprehensive plan. The GIS department from La Porte County made that for us. Now, you know, I don't remember, I thought that I had shared it with everybody who was, especially on the planning commission, so you would get a copy of what it looked like. If not, then I'll send that through again, and you could print one off, and then that way, we can maybe at least handwrite it or.
So they, they went into public record and identified all the lots that were owned by the?
Not owned, they just identified lots in the town. They're not shown by property owners, but they, they do show that, you know, this is, you know, like three tiny little lots next to one another, here's a bigger lot, so it's sort of, but it doesn't show that it's owned, who it owns, who owns it.
Not by the town?
No, no, this is in Michiana Shores, GIS when they did this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we use Beacon as our source.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, you said the La Porte County?
Well, the, the, yes, it came through, through their department, but they did not identify that it's owned by the town, by Joe Smith, by, you know, like that. All, yes, it's a general map showing all of our streets, showing where the ditch is, you know, generally where Lake Michigan is, where north-south, like this, so these are general maps.
Who has all the records that we own these properties?
Joan.
Do you have?
The town, yeah.
We have a list of all of them. We have a couple right now that we want to find out why they're not listed on Beacon.
Okay.
There's a couple of them that's not.
Is it possible to get a copy of the list of properties on the town? Can you share that with the council, is it electronic?
No, I'm just going to keep it for myself. No, you can have it.
Is it an electronic format, or?
Some of it is. It's not electronic right now, but it is in a format that can be transferred to electronic.
Okay, all right. Now, together with the issues that you raised, Sam, I remember that when, somewhere in these last four years, we did have a discussion about the threshold where we have to get more than one bid.
$10,000.
Yes, there is different thresholds, but even.
Well, we discussed a general threshold at the time for approving some kind of jobs. So they shouldn't vary, the town jobs shouldn't vary, that this kind of job, we need approval under this at a $3,000, this one we need a $10,000. Isn't it a general threshold for everything, Brad? I'm just asking this of Brad.
There is, under Indiana code, different thresholds.
There are different thresholds.
Requirements for requesting quotes, even publishing for certain types of bids.
Okay.
Well, because when I did the leaf, I mean, I reached out to 12 people, only had three bids. So I mean, I can't dictate who's going to bite on the bid itself.
No, no, but I'm saying that, you know.
Under a certain threshold, that's fine, unless I'm bids directly.
Okay.
You can certainly make a lower threshold for the town, you can't go higher than what the state.
The state does, okay. Okay. All right, so that was to clear things up like that. So in that case, then, well, Sam's going to handle this, and Sam, you, has everybody had a chance to take a look at that RFP form Sam put together, I thought it made a lot of sense. I thought it was very good. So that that should go out to, you know, a list of, you know, of service providers in that field, pardon?
Every.
Oh, yeah.
We have to.
Pardon?
We have to look carefully at this, though.
Yes, I know, to do it first. I agree, I agree. So this is why you'll get a list from Joan, and we could take a look at the locations and drive around, and to see where those are at. But I think that we have to make sure that that RFP then goes out to everybody, including, you know, the original bidder, which was Maple City. It's got to go to everybody, and everybody has to return within that certain date, whatever we give, you know, completed to the best of their ability, and that we can do a, you know, a closed, you know, a bid opening like the, you know, like we do for the refuse, we did for the leaves, and do the same thing for that here at a public meeting. Okay? Any other questions then, for that part?
What we did for the leaves had to be approved. They have to do it according to the state regulations, because of, was it $54,000 or something like that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, because it was a much larger amount, but.
But if you're going under $25,000.
Yeah.
You could also, like Brad said, you could make your own threshold.
Right, and you could adopt your own policy for small.
And you might want to do that.
I mean, you already have one, you just have never properly formalized it.
Okay.
You're right. That happens a lot.
Right. Okay, good. So, you know, I don't want to get into form, you know, starting that before we do this bid collection at this point. I mean, if we're going to go send it out, I think it's valuable for us to get various different bids anyway. But, and then do that, set up these thresholds, you know, as we go on as a task that we have to look for, look, you know, forward to working on for this coming year.
And I can pull the Indiana Code citations on that, I'll check and see if...
Okay, thank you.
So that I can send an email, so this is easier to correct.
Oh, awesome, that would be very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's see, we would move on from this then to the next, which is 9A, Approval of Engineering Work to Prepare the LTAP Documentation. So I, I believe I have sent that all out to you, you know, and the task order, I have a copy right here. Is this the first?
So a lot of mine is we have to get something in by December.
Today. Well, he has to prepare.
Well, stuff at first is everything has to be submitted.
Right, right.
Which means Shen needs three weeks...
Yes.
...to get this job done.
Yes.
We need to make a decision.
To date, yes. So I told Shen, was hoping to be able to get it by the 10th of the month, and I said our meeting only takes place on the 12th. So I actually made two copies of the document here, I did share that document.
Total, $6,800?
$6,800. Global engineering team will perform Pazer survey for all roadways within the town of Michiana, Michiana Shores. LTAP inventory ratings from the survey will be updated in the pavement asset management plan and uploaded to LTAP for the town's approval. This task order needs to be signed three weeks prior to the deadline of December 1st, 2023, in order to complete the task. So the fee is a contracted fee not to exceed $6,800. Hours and expenses will be billed per the attached global fee schedule of 2023 hourly rates. And so you saw that, you know, the email I sent. So after discussion with Joan as well, that we may have, you know, be able to use some kind of money, you know, we might as well go ahead with this. We have to do it, there's no choice, because we can't apply for any of the grants, anything else that we can get without having, you know, these documents prepared for us.
Every two years, I mean.
Yes. Right now, it's every two years, and goodness knows what else might be changed, you know, as time goes on, so...
But I thought there was a question out here, I forgot who raised it, about where these funds are coming from to pay for this. Is that answered?
Which one?
I thought there was a, there was a concern, I think...
Well, the questions were related not to this particular...
This.
But overall.
Yeah.
And Joan has since provided clarification for me.
Yes, yes.
I think it was available to everybody, but...
It was, uh-huh.
And where the funds come from.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You mean what has been appropriated for paying for this?
Yeah. No, for $6,800, it's a number.
Yeah. So, okay. Well, then, we...
Joan's able to have a copy of that?
I had made two for you, so we can sign them and give them to you, okay?
Okay, because I've been trying to get some information.
Yeah, because it has to be done, and I will tell them that it's all done. So, anyway, I need a motion for, for the LTAP.
I'll make a motion to approve the LTAP services for the quarts at the $100 price.
Okay. Okay, Ralph Box. Michael Martinez moved, Ralph Box seconded, to approve global engineering to complete the Pazer survey for all the roadways in Michiana Shores. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes. And it has been approved. So I will sign, there's only one signature place, so I'll sign this for Joan and give it to her.
Like I mentioned in one of the emails I sent you, if we have just a resolution when you're doing things like this, it is so much easier to go back when you are asking for something, to go to the ordinancees, because we have them categorized.
Okay.
You're doing this on an email, I mean, on a, just on minutes that will be showing, the council minutes will be showing you've done this. So any type of a resolution will surely help.
Okay.
It has a number, it's categorized.
I understand.
If someone comes back 10 years from now, like you were asking me for information in the past, it wasn't, it was done on a resolution.
Okay. I think we could probably do a resolution to make it retroactive then to this meeting?
Yeah, you could do that.
Brad?
You could. Are you talking about doing a resolution just for accepting your contract?
Yeah, that's what Joan was talking about. I think for this particular thing, LTAP.
For this particular job, because they come back in audit.
Okay.
And then they come back and audit and want to know, when was this approved, you know, where did we put it in the books, and all this other stuff.
Yeah, you could do that by resolution.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll get that ready for next month, okay? All right, Joan, these are for you then. There we go. And Shen will come in here to pick one up, you know, a copy of that, so...
Oh, he will, okay.
Yes, okay. All right, let us move on to the next, which is the remainder of the bill for the tree removal on Chippewa. We've been tossing this around for a couple of months, and I know the town has paid the $2,000. Today, I received an email from Joan that mentioned something about that the, the amount for the removal of the tree from the shed on the private property was from, was between $15,000 and $2,000. So I don't know where that sum, how that sum comes out for that. So I think we need to reach out to Maple Tree, Maple City Tree, to get that. I actually called Davin of Maple City and asked him, and I left him a message this morning, sometime today, I don't remember what time it was, to ask him for a breakdown. I did not hear anything back by the time I came to the meeting. So as soon as I find that out, I will be able to, to share that, you know, with everybody. So we would know exactly where that's at. My concern today is the fact that this bill currently, it had been approved to do all the work, and we have paid for half of it, half of it is outstanding. Or we as a town then, responsible basically for paying that second half now, since the job was approved, and by, by a town, you know, the road commissioner. So do we then now cover it and then hope to recoup money? What would be our best step to do?
Yeah, so the contract is between Maple City Tree and the town.
Yes.
So I mean, there's, as far as legal perspective, there's no contractual privity with the third party.
Right, okay.
So you're, the town's responsible for paying the bill.
Okay.
And if we're recouping that from a third party, that'd be between the town and the third party.
Okay. All right. Okay, so then...
It is certainly fine to ask Maple City to do a breakdown and explain why you want a breakdown.
Yes, yes.
But ultimately, the town needs to pay that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. So that gives us, you know, a good idea, we're going to need to pay that no matter what. And, but I do, would hold off at least until he gave me a breakdown so we could, you know, talk. I would just want to get that information before a bill was paid. Okay. Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The tree, a tree ordinance, this is not something we have in effect right now yet, or we have a tree ordinance, but I think it would be nice if we sort of strengthened it a little bit to encourage the residents in town not to cut trees down just because they didn't want that many leaves on their property. So, or, you know, I mean, I understand when there's construction and people have to take down trees and so forth, but, you know, to maintain that greenness of our community, to perhaps recommend that residents plant new trees if they take them down and so forth. So I'd really like to work on that. This is, you know, a thought I have, that I think it would be nice for us to, you know, promote and push forward. So not something to work on tonight, but, you know, I hope that there would be some agreement with the council members, that this would be a good idea. Excuse me.
There are some in other communities, several shores may have, so I mean, that's probably a good place to start.
Yes, uh-huh, okay.
I guess that would be...
Yeah, thank you, yeah. We like looking at other communities, it saves time.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly, okay. Okay, so hopefully I can get something started on that, and then we can, you know, share on how we'd work that out. Okay. Now, again, I had brought this up last time around, but I'd also like to work on that ordinance to initiate the stagger terms for town council members, so that we could perhaps start pushing something forward. Because this year, we had, you know, we came to an impasse, we had only three candidates who were registered to be on the, oh, excuse me, on the ballot. And because there were only three, then the county, based on state regulations, decided that, you know, we don't even need to have an election, and they decided, no ballots for you, no, not to spend any money on an election. The state says you guys have to roll over, so these four, you know, five individuals that are currently on the town council are being rolled over for the next term of four years. Of course, we do already, we know that we have someone who does want to come in, in fact, we may have two people who want to come in on it, and we will then have resident, the town council members who were not registered to run again, who are not planning to run, they will then, you know, resign from their positions, and we will work on getting in, you know, the people who, you know, hopefully were wanting to go in. If we get more candidates who want to go in, then the particular parties are going to have to do caucuses to decide on who those, you know, new members might be. So that will be taking place now, but it was not something that, you know, we were surprised because one of our town council members actually went to vote and discovered, there's no voting ballot for your town. So that was a good surprise, or not a good surprise, but a surprise. Okay. Yes, question?
What I would add to that is, I believe Long Beach just put that into place.
Uh-huh.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah.
And what I want to understand the rules is you actually have to propose that you're going to do this officially with the state prior to the election.
Absolutely.
And so we've got at least a few years before you...
Two years, no more than two years.
But it doesn't stop us from putting a plan together.
Right, yes. So that we aren't late to be able to do that, because I think it would be very valuable to replace, you know, people on a stagger basis, because five is awfully hard at once here. If we had it, three, perfect, and then we'd have two who are staying and, you know, three to come in, but, anyway. Okay, so that's just a little, you know, note on, I just wanted to bring this up again. Okay, attorney report. Brad?
Right, so we've got some litigation issues to discuss, that's why I asked you.
Check this.
Said to Diana, the request, oh, you're in executive session, and Mike, I think Ralph responded to that, maybe Sam, as far as availability, if you guys can get together early part of next week. It should take a month, half hour, maybe an hour tops, go over one large piece of potential innovation, and then a couple of smaller ones, now that are covered from dead, we can cover those too, and that way we can speak freely as far as those sort of options without...
Okay.
So all I'd ask is that we, if we've got a time, we go ahead and send it while everybody's here.
Okay. That's what we said, Monday or Tuesday, is, you know, are the dates that I think everybody said they're available, including Brad?
Right, I can get up here Monday, probably not until about 5:30, maybe 6:00, so...
Okay.
Let's do Monday.
Monday.
Okay. Monday actually, oh, yeah, Monday is free here, okay, all right.
We'll do 5:30.
Perfect.
Fine, okay, all right.
This is going to be executive meeting?
Executive meeting.
Monday at 6:00.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30, okay.
Litigation, so...
Okay. We'll make sure it gets up on the boards then. It has to be posted in our notice boards, we'll put it up on the main board, we'll put it on the website, and Joan will put it over here.
Thank you.
That's the only question for...
Do you need... We should, because that's the reason why we got them.
Okay.
You know it's close to the public?
Yes, we have to announce that we're doing it. Yeah, we have to give notice.
Yeah, the notice that you have to give them.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
For the reasoning part, I'll just give it.
All right. Okay. Okay. Not as the Laney's business, anybody have anything else to add?
Um, we're under 11.
No, it's council comments. Yeah, I ran into Michael Hotchkine today, just basically to sum up his, his request is that make sure that the town is always taking in consideration and at least applying it for that community across the, and grant. It's good money, it's a good, good fund, and...
Does he know that we did that?